Your attention, please. We need a motion to go into open session.
Madam Chairperson, I move that we go into open session.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Ms. Golson.
Certification of closed session. Whereas the Dinwiddie County School Board has convened a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas paragraph two point two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dinwiddie County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board. Dr. Elaine Pearson, District One.
I certify.
Dwayne Walker, District Two.
I certify.
Barbara Pittman, District Three.
I certify.
Mary Benjamin, District Four.
I certify.
Jason Brown the Second, District Five.
I certify.
Madam Chair, all certify.
Thank you. At this time, we have some guests here from the middle school that will help us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Golson, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the agenda as it's been presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. At this point, we are going to have a reorganization of the board, which we do every year in January. And in order to do that, we turn the meeting over to the Superintendent, Dr. Carrie Weston.
Thank you, Ms. Pittman. I'd like to start this evening by asking if we have any nominations for Chair for the calendar year 2025.
Dr. Weston, I'd like to nominate Mary Benjamin to serve as the Chair of our board.
I second.
All in favor of appointing Mary Benjamin as Chair for the Board 2025? Can I hear aye?
Aye.
Okay, any nays? Okay. Congratulations, Ms. Benjamin, to be Chair, yes. And so I think now we're gonna, yes, I think, yes, you're gonna change with Ms. Benjamin?
Do you want to switch or just pass it down?
Okay. And here's your book.
Yeah. So we're gonna continue. Now we're gonna do nominations for Vice Chair. Do we have nominations for Vice Chair for calendar year 2025?
Madam Chair, I nominate Dwayne Walker for Vice Chair. Second.
Great.
She did the second.
Okay. It is moved in second that we nominate Dwayne for Vice Chair. All in favor of appointing Dwayne Walker as Vice Chair of the Board for the calendar year 2025? Say aye.
Aye.
I have it. School Board Clerk. Dr. Weston, do you have a recommendation for Board Clerk for the calendar year 2025?
Yes, ma'am, I recommend Bonnie Golson for Clerk of the Board.
Upon recommendation of Dr. Weston, all in favor of reappointing Bonnie Golson as School Board Clerk and setting compensation in keeping with adopted schedule, say aye.
Aye.
No nays? School Board Deputy Clerk. Dr. Weston, do you have a recommendation for the Deputy Board Clerk for the calendar year 2025?
I recommend Hannah Burnett for Deputy Clerk of the Board.
Upon recommendation of Dr. Weston, all in favor of reappointing Hannah Burnett as the Deputy Board Clerk and setting her compensation at a one thousand two hundred dollars annual supplement at contract renewal time, say aye.
Aye.
No nays? Designee to attend meetings in the absence of the Superintendent. Dr. Weston, do you have a recommendation for a designee to attend meetings of the School Board in your absence for the calendar year 2025?
Yes, I recommend Dr. Amanda Clay.
Upon recommendation of Dr. Weston, all in favor of appointing Dr. Amanda Clay, designee to attend meetings of the School Board in her absence for the calendar year 2025? Say aye.
Aye.
There are no nays. Dr. Weston, do you have a recommendation for designees to sign all documents in your absence for the calendar year of 2025?
Yes, I recommend Dr. Amanda Clay and Bonnie Golson as designees to sign all documents in my absence for 2025.
Upon recommendation of Dr. Weston, all in favor of appointing Dr. Amanda Clay and Bonnie Golson as designees to sign all documents in her absence for the calendar year of 2025? Say aye.
Aye.
I have it. Code of Conduct. In August 2005, recognizing that persons who hold public office have been a public trust, has been given a public trust, and that the stewardship of such office demands the highest levels of ethical and moral conduct. Any person serving on the Dinwiddie County School Board should adhere to the Code of Ethics. Each member has been given a copy of the Code of Ethics before this meeting and has been signed accordingly. Copies of the Code of Conduct and Board Meeting Dates will be available on the table in the hallway at our February Board Meeting and will be posted on our website and on Board Docs. Adoption of the 2025 School Board Meeting Dates. Do I hear motion to set the 2025 dates and times of regular School Board Meetings as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the dates and times that are listed in the printout.
It has been motion and second that we're in favor of adopting the proposed meeting calendar as recommended by the administration. All in favor? Did I say aye? Did we say aye? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One nay on that one.
Would you?
One abstention.
I'm sorry.
One abstention, you said?
No, it's not a nay. Yeah, there was a little bit of them in there for discussion.
Is there a need for discussion?
I mean, it's just the same thing that I said last year where I'm wanting us to catch up. I know the other surrounding school districts have their School Board Public Session starting at six o'clock. Dinwiddie's a bit of an outlier, starting at four o'clock. I know having it at six doesn't necessarily mean that the room is always going to be full, as we would hope it to be, but at least gives people the option to still come out to the public session, so.
And we had discussed this prior, and I would like to add to the discussion that one of the reasons that we had left them at four was the fact that we involve once a month our students and teachers and parents. And being able to return home or return to practice or return to get homework done and that sort of things was better for that, for students to come at the earlier time. And also, I do have a concern that our staff, many of our staff come to work between six thirty and seven. And if we require them to come to these meetings, and therefore if we do them in the evening, then we're requiring them to do the fifteen hour days. And they do fifteen hour days on most any day. So those were my personal reasons for wanting it to stay at these times. But other people may have other ideas as well. Anybody else?
And my reasons were similar to Mrs. Pittman. We have our students to come for, to do activities as they are here today and other meetings even before. That it's easy to come for parents to get here at four o'clock than to go back, go home and try to do dinner and come here and stay a couple of hours, an hour and a half, and then go back. So we're trying to make it accessible so everybody would have an opportunity to come to attend the meeting. So that's why we continue with the times.
Well, to add to that discussion, I know that, you know, it's always been my opinion, it was my opinion last year, and it's the same this year, that there's greater accessibility and, you know, having the public meetings starting at, I mean, most of us are working nine to five jobs. I know I have to use PTO to come to these School Board Meetings. And again, other surrounding counties, they're all having theirs at six o'clock, six thirty. It works for their school staff, it works for their parents that are wanting to attend the meetings. And it's a bit of an embarrassment when I have people reach out to me saying, hey, I wanna show up to the School Board Meetings, but they're always starting when my kids are getting home off of the bus. They're starting when I'm at work. And I want to see more parents being able to have that accessibility to come to School Board Meetings that impact their children, their grandchildren, their nieces or nephews or other kids in the neighborhood. So I'll continue to say that next year and the year after that, but hopefully we'll catch up soon.
Are there any, are there any other? Any others, any more discussion about the times of the meeting? Madam Secretary, Ms. Golson, did we finish that or should we go back through it? We did that? Okay. So I'm to move on now to Code RVA Regional High School Board. Dr. Elaine Pearson currently serves on the Code RVA Regional High School Board. Dr. Pearson has requested not to serve on the Code RVA Regional High School Board for the year for the year 2025?
It's a typo.
And I am.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, I think.
I am Mary Benjamin, and I will serve on the Code RVA Regional High School Board for this year, 2025. Maga L. Walker Regional High School Board. Dr. Elaine Pearson currently serves on the Maga L. Walker Regional High School Board. Dr. Pearson has requested not to serve on the Code RVA Regional High School Board for the current year. Mary Benjamin has agreed to serve on the Code RVA, Code RVA Regional High School Board for the current year. Appomattox Regional Governor's School for the Arts and Technology Board. We also provide representation on the governing board for the Appomattox Regional Governor's School for the Arts and Technology. Jason Brown the Second has agreed to serve as one, the one assigned member to represent the Appomattox Regional Governor's School for the Arts and Technology with the expiration date of January 2026. Yet all members of this board can act as alternates. Rowantet Technical Center Advisory Board. Barbara Pittman and Dwayne Walker have agreed to serve on the Rowantet Technical Center Advisory Board for 2025. Advisory Boards. The Board has made the following advisory committee slash council appointments as its, at its annual organizational meeting. We have several lists for approval. Board, what is your pleasure?
I move that the list provided be accepted as the Advisory Boards.
Second.
Upon moving and second, all in favor of approving the Advisory Board as presented? Use the saying, aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. And that is it, Madam Secretary? Okay. So we will now get back to the real business at hand. Recognitions.
Yes, this evening, we have the Dinwiddie Middle School, is that right, Dr. Walker? The, we're gonna be recognizing and hearing about all the wonderful things that are happening at the Dinwiddie Middle School.
Good afternoon and happy Tuesday to our School Board members. Dr. Weston, DCPS staff, and our honored DCPS, DMS guests. I am Camden Bishop, and I will guide you through Dinwiddie Middle School's presentation. We are excited to present just a tiny portion of the exciting and educational events, as you know. As you know, Dr. Walker, the DMS admin team, teachers, and staff are highly intentional about the daily work being done at DMS. Everyone, including students, are working diligently to change perceptions to reach great heights daily. Today, you will, you will watch a video showing educational and extracurricular events from August to December. Also, you will hear from our students, from our gifted and talented program, our Introduction to Technology and Engineering classes, Exceptional Education Class, J O R T C High School Class, our Leadership and Development classes, and finally, students whose parents participated in our annual parent shadowing day. We will now have students from Ms. Mazengill's Gifted and Talented Class come to speak about their learning experiences. Good afternoon, members of the School Board. We are thrilled to be here as representatives of our secondary gifted program. Over the past semester, we've been working on projects that challenge us to think critically, solve problems, and explore new ideas and creative things. We'll give you a glimpse of our highlights we've done across science, engineering, public speaking, and more.
First is our egg drop tal- First is our egg drop challenge. Each team had a budget for supplies and designed a contraption to protect an egg from a high drop. It wasn't just about keeping the egg safe, it was about learning how to manage resources, test ideas, and improve design. And yes, we, there were some messy moments, but we learned that every crack leads to a better solution.
Next, we tackled bridge engineering with nothing but Q-tips. It sounds simple, but building a strong structure taught us about tension and compression and how tiny adjustments can make big differences. We competed to see whose bridge could hold the most weight, and let's just say we broke records and a few bridges too.
In preparation for our award-winning City Planning in the Twenty-First Century Project, we debated what makes a city successful. Is it clean energy, efficient transportation, or spaces for the community? By acting as city planners, we explore what it takes to build a thriving community and learn the importance of collaboration and compromise in solving complex problems.
And who says learning can be fun? In our mock trial of the Grinch, we took on roles as lawyers, witnesses, and a bailiff to determine if the Grinch was guilty of stealing Christmas. Specifically, criminal trespass, grand larceny, breaking, entering, and identity theft. This project combined research, guest speakers, public, public speaking, and teamwork. It was such, it was such a success that it caught the attention of local TV and CNN.
Beyond the laughs and lots of debates, it showed us how to think critically, build persuasive arguments, and bring our ideas to life in a creative way. Through these projects, we've stretched our imaginations, tackled challenges, and grown as thinkers and leaders. Thank you for supporting our secondary gifted program. We can't wait to show you what we'll accomplish next.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Now we will hear, we will hear from students from Mr. Hawkins, currently Mr. Bullock's class, speak about their learning experiences.
Good afternoon. I'm not a student, but the students were not able to be with us, but they still wanted their voices heard. In my nine weeks with Mr. Hawkins, I learned a lot. We got to make a storage container for the school and learn how to use tools we had in the classroom. I enjoyed this class because it was very hands-on and the teacher was very cool. He taught us how to use liquid nails and about drywall. This class has helped me a lot with the experience. I have started to help my parents build and design a chicken coop at home. This is a few of the reasons I love Mr. Hawkins and the tech ed class.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. We will now have Ms. Lambert and Ms. Johnson students speak about their learning experiences.
I'm Kingston Pearl.
Mm-hmm.
Seventh grade.
Mm-hmm.
Dinwiddie Middle School.
Mm-hmm.
Pumpkins? The splatter.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Now we will have students from Major Robinson and Sergeant Richards' J O R T C class speak about their learning experiences.
Am I good to go? Hi, my name is Easton Jenkins. I think Sergeant is a great teacher. I've learned a lot in his class from from standing at, standing at attention to, I'm sorry, standing at attention to taking commands, and I think that he's a great teacher.
My name is Cory Tolbert, and Sergeant is the kind of teacher that will change his way of teaching to certain students who can't learn a specific way that other students can. And I have learned, like Easton said, commands. We've done PT, which is physical training, and it helps work our body and bring our mind into a certain state that helps our health.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. We will, we will now have Ms. Anderson's Leadership and Development class students discuss their learning experiences.
No, we didn't bring the whole class. Good afternoon. My name is Crystal Anderson, and I've had the honor and privilege of teaching these talented and dedicated students behind me in our eighth grade Leadership Development class. In this course, I've used a teaching method referred to as project-based learning that focuses on actively engaging students in real-world and personally meaningful projects. The students have thrived at this methodology. At this time, I will step aside and allow a few students from our class to tell you more about their experiences working through projects and what they've learned in our course.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are students from the DMS Leadership Development class. My name is Kenya Richardson. In this class, students have learned to influence, inspire, and guide others towards a common goal. We have been taught leadership and work skills that we will use in the present and in our future.
My name is Johanna Acevedo. We have learned the pros and cons of leadership and the different types of leadership styles in the workforce. Over the course of the semester, we have participated in small projects and large projects each month. These projects taught us how to be effective leaders in real-life situations. We will start by discussing the September project, our school store. I personally learned to lead through serving as the school store manager the entire semester. I will let Violet tell you more about this project.
My name is Violet Pajen. Our September project was a school store where we transformed a junkyard room into a beautiful school store. The school store is very messy and dirty. We had to clean and organize the school store.
My name is Yaslin Diaz. And then we had to get all the inventory, which was based on the most popular snacks. All of us as students had a huge job to do because everyone was counting on us to do an amazing job on the school store. So we had to work extra hard to make everyone impressed that the aid girl did all this.
Students had to make a website to show the type of inventory. This taught us marketing skills. We had to decorate the school store for each season and holiday, which helped to bring spirit and joy to students. Students in Leadership Development had to advertise our school stores so students would know we were up for business. We also had to create passes for students to be allowed to buy snacks.
Good afternoon, my name's Kamari Lewis. I am here to tell you about our Homecoming project. I am the 2024 DMS Homecoming Shirt Designer. For the month of October, Homecoming was student-driven by twenty-five students in a Leadership Development class. Students had to work hard as a team by pressing shirts, folding shirts, and selling delivery shirts. We had to be dedicated and committed to this project to make it a success. This project taught us the fundamental principles of teamwork and organization. Designing the Homecoming shirt also inspired me to want to design and sell other merchandise in the future. Homecoming was long and stressful, but we made it happen and successfully finished this project, which had hundreds of students showing the DMS product with my design.
November project, Fall Fest. Fall Fest was our major project for the semester. We first had to come up with ideas for Fall Fest, and we decided to combine a lot of them to create Fall Fest. The night of Fall Fest, we had a few volunteers from the middle school come help set up to get us a head start. And then the day of Fall Fest, we had we had volunteers from the high school and middle school come set up activities and stations. And it was a blast. We had hundreds of people come to our event and hundreds of volunteers.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bailey. To wrap up what all my fellow classmates said, we've learned many different leadership skills along with life skills in this class, such as communication skills with leadership, teamwork, and organization, conflict resolution. Teamwork is a big one that I focus on because it is one of the main skills you will need in life and school. This is a project-based class, and even though we have a bunch of individual projects, we have learned to navigate and solve problems and work together to achieve goals. This Leadership and Development class is very useful for students that would like to earn their own business or learn to lead others. We thank you for taking the time, taking your time today and strongly suggest other project-based classes. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. We will have students whose parents participated in parent shadowing day speak about how they felt having their parents come in to shadow them and experience a day in the life of a middle schooler.
Hi, my name's Kaitlani Nguyen, and I was asked a question. The question was, how did I feel about my parent coming to school with me? I felt like it was an exciting experience for my parent to see what my life is like as a middle schooler. There's a lot, there's a big difference between elementary school and middle school. And I tell my parents about it all the time. But what was really cool was that my parent got to experience it and not just hear about it. And I'm hoping we'll be able to do it again next year.
Hi, my name is Charlie Pick, and my dad came to the parent show day with me at school. One of the reasons I liked it was because my dad got to see what I was working on and doing in class. It was also very helpful for my dad because he could help me with the things I was having trouble with in class, in school. The main reason I think it's important is because it's good for your parents to see what is happening at school so they can help and be aware of the challenges you face.
Parents' Shadow Day was a great experience for my dad because he now knows how to better help me at home. And he also knows what it's like to be a middle schooler at Denwood Middle School. My dad is now better able to connect with my teachers because Parents' Shadow Day was almost like a teacher, was, was almost like a parent-teacher conference. And I, and me and my parents both enjoy waiting for next year.
My dad came to Parents' Shadow Day and it was great having him at my school for the day and going to me with my classes. My dad and my mom now understand my day and all the requirements. And my dad received another opportunity to meet all my teachers. It was a great day.
Thank you so much for your attention to our presentation. Our camera presentation shows that DMS actively fosters a positive culture and climate that engages teaching and learning. It was an honor for you to just get a glimpse at DMS. As you can see that each day, DMS takes pride in our school. And pride means being punctual, respectful, independent, disciplined, and engaged. Lastly, we'd like to offer you with a special gift.
Our Intro to Technology and Engineering students have had real-life opportunities. Our Intro to Technology and Engineering class students have had real-life opportunities to build, repair, and create this year. Students assemble GoTech lab tables and new students' desks for DMS and they built birdhouses. This afternoon, you were presented with a birdhouse that was hand-built by a DMS student. Mr. Bullock stated that the wood is natural cedar, so you do not have to paint it. So enjoy your birdhouse. And lastly, as the proud leader of the Denwood Middle School, I would like to thank all of the students, parents, teachers, staff, and admin that came out to support. Would you please stand up? Thanks to everyone. We greatly appreciate you. We appreciate your support. And we are the Denwood Middle School where we are changing the perception daily to achieve greater heights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we give you an opportunity to take a break or some of you may have to get home to do some homework or some things, uh, would any board members have anything they would like to say?
I just want to say thank you to the Denwood Middle School for such an outstanding presentation and for having so many students participate. And parents, thank you for bringing them to us.
I thoroughly enjoyed the presentation and I love the slogan, Dr. Walker, of, uh, changing the perception because I know that there has been through the years a perception issue with middle school. And I see awesome things happening, so I'm thrilled about it. Just really thrilled to see how much further we can go. So thank you.
Um, I really appreciate the fact that you have so many people participating and the fact that there's so many opportunities and different kinds of skills that will be learned through these activities. And that's the name of the game of education is to let you experience what you might need in life, in a job, or in a relationship, or on a team, or in a club, and learn the skills to be successful in that endeavor. So thank you.
Yeah, it was a really great presentation. Uh, thank you to all the students that showed up. Um, and thank you for your hard work that you're putting into all the projects that you're doing and all the classes that you are taking. Uh, one of the distinguished speakers tonight had said something that really stood out to me. Um, and it said, uh, tiny adjustments can make big differences. Um, that really, really stood out to me. Please be one of those tiny adjustments that's making a big difference in a world that's constantly changing. Be a part of the positive change in the world. Um, definitely keep that up. To all the students that have played a role in making the birdhouses, absolutely love them. Thank you for the gift. I'll be sure to put it up at my home. Um, and then also the young gentleman that had the Homecoming Shirt. If you can just stand up and show it to everyone else, because only the six or seven of us got to see it up here. So I want to make sure everyone gets the pleasure of that.
Well, the Denwood Middle School is that, that's, that's what it's called now. You have really done an awesome job and we just appreciate each of you coming out this afternoon. And those who did not come out and had a part in it, and I know they are learning, to Dr. Walker and her staff, parents, students, to the whole gang over there. At the Denwood Middle School, thank you. And we're looking for bigger and greater things because I believe I, I did observe some leaders in that crowd tonight. So I'm expecting a greater. Thank you. So now you may have a few minutes that you can maybe take some pictures and dismiss and go home and get that homework done. Thank you again. That was so nice how the young man helped him. But I like to see that. Oh, that just does my heart good. Wonderful, wonderful. So you doing, what happened to the leg? That's right. Good to see you. Glad to be back. Yes, glad to have you back. Yes. Come on, students, get to the middle. Well, we're going to, um, reconvene. So I know some of you have been in school since six o'clock this morning and we're ready to move on.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel list as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve the personnel list as presented. All those in favor, use the sign. None opposed? The personnel list is approved. Consent, agenda, expenditure reports.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the expenditure reports as presented. Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the expenditure reports as presented. All of those in favor, use the usual sign.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Approval of minutes for December the 10th, 2024.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept or approve the minutes from December 10th, 2024.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the minutes from December 10th, 2024. All of those in favor, use the usual sign.
Aye.
There are no nays. Board matters.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here presenting a trip for our DECA, uh, the DECA Club at the high school. They need to, uh, travel down to Virginia Beach, uh, on February 28th, Friday. They'll leave Friday morning, return Sunday afternoon. They'll be taking the activity bus, uh, and one county car. Um, they'll be staying overnight. This is for their state competition. We've had 12 team members, um, qualify to compete at the state level. Uh, so Ms. Gravely, Ms. Nivens, and I believe it's Sergeant Robertson, or Roger, Sergeant is taken down. Uh, Richardson, sorry, thank you. Um, he's driving the activity bus. Gravely will take the car. And they will be the chaperones overnight in the hotel.
Are there any questions?
Are the students paying that cost, the $250, or is that coming from the club?
That's coming. They, they raise funds. Then I believe cost last year might have been zero to $10, I think, for the kid. Um, but I, they're, they do concessions. We're running a dance. We're doing different things to raise that money for them.
Are there any other questions?
Madam Chairperson, I move that we approve the DECA State Leadership Conference in Virginia Beach.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve the DECA State Leadership Conference trip to Virginia Beach. All of those in favor, use the usual sign.
Aye.
There are no nays, so it is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I've come before you for approval, uh, today for a couple of, uh, security enhancements that we're going to do um, with some of our state security money. Um, we got a couple of different sources of money, so we broke them up into two different sections. Uh, the first one is the traditional security equipment grant that we get, uh, each year. Uh, we have gotten this grant since 2015. This year was a little different. Uh, once you get the full amount for three years in a row, you lose points, uh, on the rubric. So you don't get the full amount the fourth year. So hopefully next year we'll be back to getting the full amount. It's just the way the state does it. I called. I didn't really understand why, but you got the full amount for three years, so we lost some points this year. Uh, this year we were awarded $171,046. And then we had the, uh, local 25% match, which is, uh, a little under $43,000. And so we have a $215,000 security equipment grant. Um, we are using that money, uh, with some other money we're pulling together to complete the interior, uh, key card at Sunnyside Elementary. Um, again, just for, for reference, you know, we, we go through this and we, we did this based on, I made a list of the vulnerabilities. And we went by, the most vulnerable school is how we did this and Sunnyside is next in line. Uh, we're also going to restructure their vestibule, security vestibule. Right now, if you go to Sunnyside and you go into the vestibule, they have to look at you on a camera, on a video, which is not safe. So we're going to restructure that so that they can have face-to-face contact with vet visitors. Um, so this, uh, this project, uh, the total cost of the project is going to be $263,555, which obviously leaves us a, uh, $48,000 overage. And we're going to use the, um, local CIP funding to cover that. And so I'm here before you today to ask for approval for this, uh, project at Sunnyside Elementary.
Are there any questions for Mr. Walters?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the, uh, the project.
It has been moved in second that we accept the school security equipment grant to be used at Sunnyside. Coming from Mr. Walters. All of those in favor, use the usual sign.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
No nays, so it's approved.
Thank you. Um, we did get, um, some extra security money, uh, that the state divvied up this year. And so we're also going to take advantage of that. Uh, we got a one-time security grant. Um, uh, it came from state and federal funding, uh, $80,990 from the state and $62,764 federal. So we basically got a little under $144,000 to be used as a one-time grant. Um, we plan to use this to do the same enhancements that we're doing at Sunnyside at Southside Elementary. And I know that probably doesn't make Ms. Colberth happy that she might be under construction, but it's only a two-week project. It'll be very quick. Um, Southside had some interesting things, though. Uh, we're going to do the interior key cards, no problem. But the storefront on Southside office, we figured out, was made of wood. Um, I guess that's just how they did it when they built it. So we had to figure out a way to adhere vestibule to it so that it would be structurally sound. So they're going to have to do some work up in the ceiling, get some metal in there so that they can make it structurally sound and make it a true security vestibule. So it was a little more expensive. Uh, the total cost of this project is $340,838. Um, the way this is going to break down is we're going to use $143,754 from the one-time grant. Then we got $189,000 from the county, uh, for CIP funding. And then we're going to use $8,000, a little over $8,000 for, from the, uh, local CIP funding. And so that'll make up the difference there. Um, both of these projects, I'm sorry, I neglected to mention, both of these projects will start the day after school ends in May. Uh, or probably the first, first Monday in June. And they take about two weeks. So, um, I am here asking for your approval to move forward with this project at Southside Elementary also.
Are there any questions for Mr. Walters?
Madam Chair, I move that we, um, accept this project.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept this school safety and security grant in the project for Southside Elementary. All those in favor?
Aye.
No nays, it's granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Internet security safety policy? Oh, we have two. Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. MP and I are presenting the proposed internet safety policy for approval. This policy establishes a framework to ensure the safe, responsible, and ethical use of the internet and digital resources within Denwood County Public Schools. It also reflects our commitment to complying with the guidance provided by the Virginia Department of Education. And following the direction of a model policy shared by the VDOE, we have formalized these processes into a written document to ensure clarity, consistency, and alignment with state expectations.
Next is, we create a purpose statement to ensure safe, responsible, and ethical internet use in all schools. Protect students and uphold values of excellence. And follow federal regulations on internet safety like CIP. We're going to make sure that we're going to keep our students safe. It's a goal for all of us to protect them from all of these things on in there. I always say there's tons of great things on the internet, but there's also tons of things you have to keep these students away from to protect them until they get old enough. And that's part of the, the, what the standard policy does. Outlying, I mean, I just think there's a lot of these things, outlawed acceptable use of computer system. It's all the students supposed to follow certain procedures when they use our equipment. Just like anything at home, we have to have rules for it to make sure you keep your equipment safe and that your equipment can be readily used at any time. And, um, we go on to policy objectives is access. And it says utilizing, utilizing filtered software. One of the things that helps keep students protected is filtered software. That filtered software, certain things students can't get to is because we're trying to protect them from inappropriate material. Every, everyone has to have some filter and that's a federal guideline. You have to do that. And we also acknowledge And we also, another thing is monitor, monitor this network. The network's got to be monitored. I always say this, it's, it's, uh, when you're protecting students and all that, it's sort of like playing chess. When they make a move, and they do something that you try to keep a track of or stuff, you have to make a move because you can't keep its network steady and stable. It's gotta change all the time to keep everybody safe, because they change and things change, and things outside of the, uh, uh, our network changes on the web too, but it also makes you change. And then the one thing also, complying with state reg, federal regulations, you know, these federal and state regulations are here, like I said, CIPOL, which is the Children Protective Internet Act, which is another one of those regulations. And I know you have CIPOL and HIPAA, all these regulations, it's in place to protect students and, uh, protect their identity and things like that. You always gotta follow those regulations. That's one of the things that you have to do at state level, federal level. And also, nice thing on this was you, you use update, I simply use policy, updating that, that's one of the policies. You know, it's all like AI and everything, the network and, and technology state of change, so you gotta keep updating your policies to match some of those changes. And then that's the, so if you, the DCPS, um, community at the primary group, there's a link to books at this kind of information.
And the last part of the policy includes instructional design, which focuses on education and support of students, staff, and our community. So, Denwoodie County Public Schools is committed to educating all students to ensure their safety and success in the digital age. And this includes digital citizenship, including social media usage, online security and password safety, copyright laws, cyberbullying, digital reputation. To ensure all students are educated on internet safety, we have developed a digital learning implementation plan for elementary, middle, and high school students. These lessons incorporate the digital learning integration standards of learning. And those are linked there, but there is a new.
Elementary, um, implementation plan that is taught in the library for kindergarteners through fifth grade, and then for the middle school and high school, those are, lessons are taught during their advisory period. And then student education will be ongoing as teachers and staff provide students with positive meaningful learning experiences. In addition, all staff are provided ongoing professional learning to keep them informed about safe and effective technology use. And we have also set up an internet safety resources section on the county website where we can provide resources for our community. This plan will remain ongoing and adaptable as technology evolves, ensuring that lessons and support align with emerging digital trends and best practices for internet safety. So we are here today asking for your approval of this policy.
Are there any questions from board members?
Madam Chairperson, I move that we approve the internet safety policy as presented.
It has been moved in second that we approve the internet safety pol, safety policy. All of those in favor, use the, use your sign.
Aye.
There are no nays. Other questions?
Yeah, just basically, what is different or what big changes over?
Most of the things are already have been in place. I think one of the biggest things that, um, was a, we wanted to ensure was the education of the students and their lessons. And so elementary, um, you know, the innovation specialist had been working with that, but the librarians also have joined in, and that way we ensured that all students, K through five, got it, um, received the lessons. And then for middle school and high school, that was probably the, one of the biggest challenges, was finding a place that we could fit it in. But with both, um, levels having the advisory, um, you know, section there, that really helped with that. And so we were able to plug those into, um, those, that time period. And I think that's probably the, you know, most of these things were, are things that were all, but also because of changing technology, we know that this will be constantly changing.
So when we have included these in our student handbook, regulations.
Yes.
And I know with the acceptable use policy, we had an update in that in May, which included the, um, AI.
AI portion that was added.
Okay.
We can go on with the motion now. Madam Secretary, can we finish, finish the motion with the question, uh, after the question? Then, um, we finished the motion, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to get that straight. Ask for the question. Good afternoon.
I am a, more of a list type of person, but, um, that doesn't really capture everything that went into this, so I wanted to kinda give you a brief overview of.
Of how, uh, our courses are selected for Denwoodie County. Um, I, um, this is probably one of the most exciting tasks for me because it gives me an opportunity to bring things to students based on their interest and based on our local needs, our community needs, the emerging trends in the workforce, um, and really think about how we're preparing our students for college careers and beyond. So I did give you a couple of handouts to hopefully guide you through that process. I am a chart person, but I also recognize everybody is not a chart person. So in those links that are in, uh, board docs, it is active for any parent or student or teacher that wants to explore, um, that chart is interactive, so when you hover over it, it gives you a course description to kinda help guide you through that. And there's additional tabs, which I have in the printed handout for you, that show you as a student how you would progress from sixth grade all the way through your twelfth grade year. Um, what I'd like to do is just give you a summary of those, because some of those changes are not reflected, um, with the color coding system. So all of our new courses are bright yellow, but there have been enhancements or changes to other courses, such as the curriculum, that I wanna bring your attention to, because that's also important for you to know. Um, so I'm gonna start with English and kinda work my way across the board so that you're aware of all the changes, and then, um, at the end, answer any questions and ask for your approval of our new courses. Um, in the area of English and language arts, all of our curriculum has been updated to reflect the two thousand and twenty-four English standards of learning. Um, this included the adoption of the HMH text for our middle school, um, to help with instruction. And then our English department, I'm happy to say, has really embraced artificial intelligence. Um, as a parent, I have seen it reflected, um, in my child's learning, and I think it's really exciting that our teachers are teaching students how to use it ethically and how to cite it, um, and how it can use to enhance what they already know. So that was very exciting. A lot of that includes some professional development opportunities for our teachers that have been facilitated by our, um, innovation specialists. Our DMS teachers are completing their VLA modules to also learn how to help students with the foundational pieces of reading. Um, and we also were able to expand some opportunities for students by having a high school teacher attend the AP Academy as well as finish their master's degree, um, and teach dual enrollment. So now all of our English dual enrollment classes are taught in-house and don't have to be taught by Richard Bland, um, asynchronously. Um, all of our tenth grade students this year are participating in the writing SOL. And this is the first year that our tenth graders have, um, participated in that, and our first round of testing, they have done exceptionally well. Um, this is gonna prepare all students for careers in, or college, if that's what they choose. Um, and so this year we're double testing, because we have our tenth and eleventh graders, but moving forward, it'll only be our tenth grade students. And so they will all take research and writing, or researching, writing honors, um, to prepare them for the rest of their, uh, high school and college careers. Moving on to social studies, this spring, starting Thursday, we will have a new dual enrollment class under, uh, world history. We no longer will offer AP world history unless they want to do it through Virtual Virginia or a different platform, but we will be offering it in person with one of our DHS teachers who is approved through Richard Bland to offer that. So that means some of our tenth graders will actually be able to start earning college credits, um, starting Thursday, um, which will count towards their AP, their associate's degree. Um, and then from now until, as we get more information from the state, we will start building our new history curriculum. Uh, the SOLs have been released. The state is being a little bit slower to give us all the resources that we need, but we are gonna start that process this spring through the summer to be prepared for the, uh, fall. Mathematics, all of our curriculum has been updated to reflect the two thousand and twenty-three standards of learning. Um, we are exploring additional resources and things like that to help facilitate the adoption of those standards. We are proposing a new course for data science. Um, and that really is an important course for me, because it's what I do every day. I'm looking at data and I'm creating solutions to real-world problems. And so it's not just about mathematic calculation. It's about interpreting what you're getting and making sense of it to solve problems and create representations that are necessary to communicate how you would solve those things. Um, our calculus course, uh, we have a teacher that has been teaching, uh, AP calculus for several years. We used to only offer the AB section of AP calculus. We added last year the BC part of the calculus, so that they could potentially take either part of that, um, and get credits for both. But, uh, Mr. Watts has done a lot of work to see what the alignment would be for offering it as dual enrollment, so that the students would have the option. And he is an approved teacher through Richard Bland as well, so again, they will be having that option, uh, depending on the college of their choice, whether their college prefers AP or accepts the dual enrollment credits. In science, there was a change to the course progression. We have piloted it for a couple of years, and now our ninth graders are moving forward with this complete update to the course progression, where our ninth graders choose between biology honors, biology, or environmental science. Um, our ninth graders, um, did really well on the biology SOL this semester. Um, and so in the past, earth science was the first science that they took. Uh, so this will put earth science after biology, and you can see you're, depending on where you want to start in that pathway, you have the flexibility. Um, environmental science in their graduation requirements can count as the biology credit or the earth science credit. However, federal accountability requires participation in the biology SOL. So our recommendation is to start with biology, um, so that we're not, uh, double testing students and, um, focusing on getting them where they wanna be as far as their course progression and their career goals. In world languages, um, we tried something new, um, out of necessity. And I think our Spanish students have benefited through that. We've been able to do American Sign Language, um, through Virtual Virginia, and we have a classroom facilitator where our teacher at Virtual Virginia communicates with our students in live instruction every day, um, and is facilitated by DCPS staff. By continuing this, we would like to expand in our American Sign Language, because that was the most requested, as well as consider Latin or other languages that students have a high interest in, so that they have more than one option, um, in their world languages. Um, there are summer options that we plan to advertise to parents if that is where they want their student to go, to give them some more summer options. In fine arts, we're proposing a new course called video production, where students can use their creativity to really, um, make some great products to benefit Denwoodie High School. Um, they will create their own films as well as market them, um, to release. So, um, I think this will be a really good class. We have our, uh, teacher that is in theater arts who started with film study, and that has been a very popular class. Even some of our eighth graders have been able to take advantage of that class. Um, and so this would be another part, an extension of that, understand where film is made and then creating your own. Um, this spring, I just want, since we haven't offered it yet, is the three D design and sculpture, and that class is full. And so I'm excited about that. We, um, uh, retired a class in, um, computer art graphics and picked this up. Um, and I think it's gonna be a great addition to our art department. Within our health and PE and driver's ed department, Denwoodie County High School is now our remote testing location to get your learner's permit. So students can actually sign up and take their test at Denwoodie High School after school, and then take their receipt of passing to get their card and official ID made at the DMV. I think it reduces the anxiety students may have about going to a new test location that they've never been, with people that they've never talked to. Um, and we've had eight six, eight students just in our two's testing session so far that have passed and earned their learner's permit. Um, and so, uh, within the PE department, um, we'll, last year we piloted, and we will continue to offer PE nine, um, over the summer for our students. They do the course virtually. They keep track of their exercise routines, submit that to the teacher, and then come in for one day for their hands-on CPR part that meets their graduation requirement. And the last area that I wanted to highlight was in career and technical education. We know that health and medical sciences is a growing field, and so, um, this year we offered medical terminology, uh, for the first time. And then we want to expand that for next year to offer sports medicine athletic trainer one. Um, we, this is gonna give them, um, a lot more information. I mean, they, they're gonna learn not only the medical terminology, but the hands-on component, you know, how to wrap ankles, how to take care of athletes and things like that on the sideline. And the teacher that is, um, uh, spearheading this class and has gotten the equipment together for me is really excited about the ability to work with some of our sports teams and, and aid some of our athletes. Um, I'm also suggesting that we retire the ag power systems and replace it with agricultural fabrication and emerging technology. It fits in the same pathway, however, it, um, is gonna focus more on the metalworking, welding, and drone technologies as it relates to agriculture and precision agriculture. And so that is more aligned, I think, with the needs of our community and the job and demand in our area. Travel and tourism marketing, again, I think is a great fit in our marketing department to enhance our, um, to go along with our real estate and our digital and social media classes. Um, we have a student interest there, and I think that this would make a nice fit into that. And then lastly, you'll see that Rowanee is providing some additional opportunities for our students um, in their one-year cluster classes if they wanna continue their experience, um, with Rowanee. So that was the quick summary, but I know that students, I think students like quick, easy flow charts, and think it's a whole lot easier to follow, because it doesn't always compute that you need to take foundations of ag and then intro to power and then agrifac, agricultural fabrication. Gone are the days of ag one, two, three, four, you know? So it does help to kinda give them some type of graphic or flow to know where, uh, they need to start their pathway and where they can jump in. I labeled them nine, ten, eleven, twelve, but of course a student could enter them in different grades depending on, um, if they just had the interest and meet the prerequisites for those. The ones in that, uh, bluish color mean they are available for our, um, some of our eighth grade students have enrolled in some of those. So entrepreneurship education, JRTC, um, a lot of them, you'll see foundations of ag. We do have some eighth graders that are already currently, um, attending the high school to get a high school experience in the eighth grade and earn high school credits. So, I would be happy to answer any questions, but I am seeking your approval to add these new courses to our course catalog for Denwoodie Middle and High School.
I do have one question on the video, I mean, on the, um, three D's, three D design structure. Is that using the three D printer that we already owned, or is that just a different course?
It's a different course. It is more about allowing students to create different sculptures using a variety of mater, materials. So we have a ceramics course, and that has been very popular. So the three D design, they might be using wire, papier-mache, uh, recycled materials to create an original piece.
Are we still doing the three D printer within the, uh, courses that Mr. Bullock used to teach?
So we do have a teacher, she's actually an agriculture teacher, that has experience with a three D printer. And then we have two new three D printers that are just at the middle school, and so our go-tech rep was here today getting a lot of things set up so that we can get those running.
Yeah, I'd hate to see us have them just sitting there not using them with students, but, and I know it had to pause for some.
The new ones at the middle school are super fast in talking to, you know? So she was explaining that, you know, the old, uh, three D printers would take almost an hour to print a pen. This one will do it in less than thirty minutes, so it's exciting that the kids will actually get to see their projects made right there in front of them, and it changes colors seamlessly and all these other things, so I'm excited that we got some new things for the middle school as well.
And, uh, one more question on the sports medicine. Is that utilizing the person who works with our athletes currently, or someone already on staff?
So he is offered to, um, be a guest speaker and, and things like that, but we actually have a licensed teacher that is teaching, um, our health and medical science classes right now. And so this would be an extension of what Ms. Prince is already teaching, yes.
Are there any other questions? I like the idea that you're constantly, you know, going through these courses to see if they, if we have that many students interested in them. And I'm glad to see that you're working with Rowantec with the nurses aid and the masonry and that, those things, because those are things that we really need and, and definitely automotive. We can't get enough of them. So I do appreciate what it takes to go through and figure it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Are there any questions for her and you need approval for this?
Yes, ma'am.
So we need a motion.
Ma'am Chair, I mean, we accept the course changes as provided by Ms. Wolf.
It has been moved in second that we accept the secondary course updates and additions. All of those in favor, use the usual sign.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Here are none, it is approved. Thank you. There's no new business, superintendent matters?
Yes, Ms. Fleming is going to come and give you a sneak preview of the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Before we get into the budget, I do want to give you a little update on our enrollment as it stands for the current year. We are kind of holding where we were last month when I came and talked to you. Of course, it's still, we're, we're still under, slightly under four thousand students. However, you know, we, we had already made a plan for what that needed to look like with revenue reduction. We've got quite a few positions that we are not filling or have been filled with long-term subs. Unfortunately, because we couldn't find staff. However, that does generate a cost savings. So thankfully, we're able to absorb this in the current year. But it's going to trail forward into next year as well. So I just want to kind of touch base on a few things. The governor introduced his budget on December the eighteenth. This is a biennial budget year, this is the second year of the biennium. There are really no big changes from what was adopted in June except it does include an additional three percent salary increase. You have before you a detailed projected revenue report and it's got three columns on it. And so I'm going to kind of quickly go over what they look like. The first one is the current adopted budget for FY twenty twenty-five. And that is the, you know, the budget that we are living in as of today with an ADM, which is an average daily membership, which is the number of students that we're, we based our budget on of four thousand one hundred students. The next column shows the governor's budget as it relates based on four thousand one hundred students as well. So there's a comparison of what that really looks like. So when you look at this, if you, if you flip it over on the back page, it looks like we're receiving an increase of a million and thirty-one thousand dollars, two hundred, thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. However, the real number is eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars comparatively, which I've got written there. Because we did see an increase in our summer school numbers this year, which increased our revenue for summer school, which inflated the overall revenue that they're projecting. But that has to go to summer school, so we really can't spend that money anyway that we would like that to. So if you base, if you look at budget to budget for the same number of students, basically what we're receiving is the amount of the state share of a three percent increase and some additional money for homebound, which is always welcome because we do spend significant amount in homebound. However, as we move forward with the FY twenty-six budget development, the first thing that we need to talk about is what are we going to base our budget on as far as students go? And since we already know we're sitting in the hole, we know we need to make a reduction there, which is significant. Dr. Weston and I had a brief conversation earlier today and, you know, we're thinking that for it, we need to reduce it by a hundred students and that's where we need to start. As we go through this development, we may need to even take it down further. But that's where we're going to start. So this last column shows what it would look like if we took it down a hundred students, which shows an increase of fifty-one thousand. However, that's, you know, really what we're looking at when you factor the summer school out is a hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollar loss in funding. So, which is not good, but I mean, you know, we, it's, it's, it's reality. So we're going to have to try to, try to figure this out. The budget administrators and principals have all completed their budgets. It has been keyed in. We have done presentations. We have one more day of presentations next Tuesday to hear. And so, you know, we're reviewing these, we're running analysis and cost estimates for increases. We're looking at ways to reduce costs. I know Dr. Weston told me on Monday that she'd been thinking about some things and looking at things. So she's got some ideas. You know, budget development is going to continue over the coming weeks and months. But we do know that, you know, we'll be looking at this through a lens of, you know, reductions. Still, you know, while still trying to, you know, provide salary increases. Now, I did attend our, the superintendent and director of finance conference last week. We have a joint conference together every, every January. It was virtual, which was really nice. But, you know, what we heard is the state has a lot of money. And none of it really was directed toward, none of the additional money that the governor did was really directed towards education. So we're hoping that, you know, as the general assembly gets in there, they will make some changes or some additional, you know, funding to K-12 education. So we can only hope for that. You know, we certainly did our part talking to, I believe we had four legislators attend and talk to us. So hopefully, you know, they heard our message and, you know, we will get some additional funding for, for things. Know that the governor did a lot of one-time funding. You know, even that would be nice sometimes for things that, you know, for it, construction would be nice. So anyway, we'll just hope and see, so we'll, we'll keep a track on that. Do you have any questions about the handout I just provided you? It's a detail by the categories that we receive our money in the line items. But I'd be glad to explain any, anything that you need.
They allowed us to keep the hold harmless, the loss of students, is that going away?
I don't know that there's anybody that's still receiving anything with that because overall I think there are a lot of divisions that are experiencing this. So I, I have not seen anything about hold harmless on enrollment loss, but you are correct, we have received that in the past. But, you know, I ran it and if it, if they see you, the state projects us lower than what I have actually. So they would, that would have factored in, you know, when they provided us with our documentation, if that was out there.
Where is the extra money going? It's not going in education. Infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's a car tax. I, I didn't, I'll be, I didn't really understand it overly, so I don't want to stand up and say something wrong.
There's also opportunity grants for low-income families so that they can go to schools of their choice. So that's in there.
There were a lot of, there was the biggest number in, in where it was going. And I've got a copy of this, I could certainly provide it to you. I didn't bring it with me unfortunately. But I believe over a billion dollars is going to one-time and construction. But.
There are also more, more of the laboratory schools.
I was getting ready to say that.
He's got a lot, especially with the HBCU.
Yeah, I, I do know that one of the set of legislators we talked to was, they were, they were not in favor of leaving that forward. They had a lot of questions about that.
Any of those laboratory schools in our area? It's mostly in the beach area.
I think they're, I think these are for new lab schools is what the money is set aside for. And they're encouraging colleges to apply for the money.
There was some money also in there for security. And one of the questions that we asked was, it, it identified that there would be money available for additional school resource officers. And, but it, the way it's worded, it's only at schools that do not have them or they're not currently funded, I think is the way it says. So we have quite a few grants that are funding our school resource and school security officers that will expire at the end of this year. And so one of the questions we did ask was, would that make us qualify since, you know, we, we would no longer have the funding for, for those things? And so they weren't quite sure about the wording of that, they were going to have to get back to us. They did indicate that there was additional school construction funds that you could apply for. And currently it's through what's called the SCAP grant. And we have applied for a couple of those but haven't received them. So I don't know if that would, you know, help since there's more funding out there. But, you know, really what is out there right now did not look like.
The other thing was a million dollars been set aside for, to implement the new framework for the schools as well as six new positions for that department. For the new framework for the school accountability.
I have a question. Was there any discussion about, I know there had been that Jay Lark study that had been published about significantly underpaying teachers. It sounds like their priority is more privatization than it is paying teachers what they deserve. Was there any discussion about that?
Yes, there was. They, I think the general assembly is still trying to figure that out. I do believe that they hired a firm to kind of come in and look at what the Jay Lark study presented and provide them with, I guess, cost estimates and, and different scenarios. Because in that, you know, they're going to be winners and losers. So, you know, it can be a, a hot topic. But yes, they did talk about that. I know that some of the recommendations that were given, one of the legislators did mention that they would like to see that implemented. And I know that we are pushing that they at least fund the support cap, that shortage that they instigated in two thousand nine when we had the great recession. We've never, we have not gotten back to the level of funding at that level yet. So we're close as, as of right now, but they're not supporting the, the support positions. And what I mean by that is every school division, just about employees and staffs, their schools at a higher level than what we're required. And so at one point in time, we were receiving some additional funding based on how you were doing that. Whether you had, you know, ten more positions, you know, or, you know, five more positions. And it was done by, you know, by locality. However, we, we lost all the funding for that in two thousand, between two thousand nine and ten. So we, we would like to get some of that back, that would, that would be great. So there are some ideas that they are entertaining. I don't know if it'll come through this session since it's the second year of the biennium, but it certainly could be something that they look at for the, the coming years. I was hoping we were going to hear something about additional salary increases, but, and we still may, I mean.
Jay Lark, the new study they're taking on is the new accountability framework.
Yes.
They are going to be studying that.
Is there, look like there's any move towards expanding the SOQ-funded positions?
Well, the new funding formula, I mean, based on, they're, they're talking about funding it based on students and which, so instead of this, you know, huge funding, like, you know, formula that takes a whole page to do, I would assume that, you know, that would kind of do that, but, you know, I don't know any other details.
So you're saying that the new formula that Elise is being talked about would be based off the student population? And so that would be tying the funding that we're receiving from the state to enrollment?
Yes. Yes, and I think it's, it's going to be tied more to like student need, like what kind of students do you have in your division? And, you know, how does that, and, and reflected that way as opposed to just the number? Because technically we, we are funded with just the number now.
Without regard to what their needs are, like special needs population.
Right, I mean, we receive money for special ed, but it doesn't come close to covering the cost of educating our exceptional ed population. So, you know, looking at our, you know, it would be tied to the achievement, the new, you know, framework for that and how that looks like. The part of it, what, part of it that, what they did was, they did change the funding formula for our English lang, what do they call it? English learners. And so we're, we're being funded on a percentage and higher at the, the, the students that are at this level and then a different funding formula for the students at this level. And it's the four tiers. So, you know, depend upon where our students are in there, depends upon how you get funded. Where previously it was just, you know, if you're an Yale student, we get this. So they are looking at some of that.
Just sounds like really messy.
I believe that it is, Mr. Brown, yes.
You're giving people money to choose another school and then you're starting to base our, what is it, the funding we receive from the state based off of the amount of students that we have, that students going to other schools, it's just like.
It can be very messy. It's based on, you know, our fund, the funding formula currently is based on county data. It's based on taxes and real property and, you know.
Earning potential.
Earning potential, I mean, you know, it's really not based on the schools. That, the basic aid funding formula, that is.
So in addition to all this good news that Christie just shared with us.
Yeah.
Thank you, Christie. We also got the preliminary number back from health insurance. It looks like a twelve percent increase.
Yes.
And that's, it always starts high.
It does. It was, it was like that last year and it ended up at four and a half, so. Yeah, I know.
He said, don't think that, yeah. But twelve percent is what he started with. They don't think they can get it that low.
No, he, yes, he did say that. So we'll be, we'll be bringing lots of choices.
Creativity to think through this stuff.
You're just wanting to start the new year off with a bang.
Yes.
That's for information.
Information, yes.
Yeah, this is information.
At least have a lot of work to do to get it ready.
You so much for that F twenty-six budget update. And we know you keep us updated.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
As it goes on and we're not going to frown on it, we're just going to take it and move it on.
As Dr. Weston said, we're going to figure it out.
Figure it out.
And it's going to be okay.
We'll figure it out.
Are there any citizen comments? There are no comments. Board member comments? We'll start with. No comments?
I, I first of all, wanted to acknowledge Ms. Pittman. And of course she served as our, our board chair for my first year in this role. And I can't think of a better person to kind of teach the ropes. She's, she's been a phenomenal mentor and, and leader, so I appreciate all that you do. And I hope that you don't stop helping me just because you don't. But I also just wanted to share a little bit of, of an experience that I had just before the Christmas break. My wife and I, along with some of our friends, volunteered at Sutherland Elementary for lunch duty. So the idea was the administrators there had made arrangements to give the teachers a special meal. And so we would cover lunch duty while the teachers got to eat. And I realized that I'm not called to education in that, in, in that sense. Because it's overwhelming, the number of kids and the needs that children have. But in that, I, I gained an appreciation for teachers, but also for the folks that work in nutrition. And we just have a lot of good people in our school system. And I think it would do us all well sometimes to try on someone else's shoes just to, to gain an appreciation for them because we all have opinions. But many times we have opinions without understanding. But many times, we have opinions without um understanding. And uh so I I enjoyed that experience and hope to do some similar things in the future. But uh I'm I'm especially grateful for the people who uh make our schools work.
Uh thank you for your kind remarks. I um enjoy any hat that I've worn around here and um hope to be helpful to anybody that needs help. Um I would, I volunteered one day recently in the culinary arts at the high school. And it is amazing. Um it was a first-year class. It's amazing on what they learned and what kind of products they can produce in that amount of time. And there were several students in there who had um applied for or one had been accepted to the um culinary arts school. So uh they were very serious about what they were gonna do. And they um they presented a meal. They they had to buy it. They had to um estimate the cost of it. They had to uh we we were supposed to rate it on um, you know, how they plated it and the colors and all the things that, you know, restaurants do. So it was a very good experience and the students were um very serious about what they were doing and um very talented in what they were doing. As far as the state regulations and the state monies are concerned, is it has been a concern of ours for years. And this J-Lark study continues to point out the the shortcomings of Virginia funding public education. And it just, no matter what that study says, the study keeps saying you're not funding public education well enough. You're not funding those things that you are requiring. Um and they require passed laws that don't put money behind or they don't fund, which is very troubling. Um but then to start out to try to um add things to the mix, which is the um you know, the new schools, the governor's schools and and um it it just like defies the fact that they put money to pay J-Lark to study it. And so J-Lark studies it and says you're not funding what you're supposed to do. And then they don't do what they paid the study to do. It's it's very, um it's very troubling, but you still have to press on. You still have to do what you need to do with the money that you do get. And um so the SOQ positions not being funded, we we pay a lot of money locally to give raises to people that aren't in that category of the state-funded SOQ. We have to and we need to, but it's, it it doesn't seem to be getting better, which is very troubling. But that's it.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to get used to speaking after Ms Pittman now and some of the stuff. It's gonna be interesting. Um I don't have any comments. I think the only thing that I know um is uh based off of some of the points that were brought up today and discussed and then also some of the conversations we had before. Um I know that we all had our town halls um within our districts. And I know I spoke to my board of supervisors representative. Um and I shared with her that I thought it was really great what we were able to do in in my district and I definitely want to have that again. And I know that with it being not only a gubernatorial election this year, but also our state delegates as well, um I'm gonna definitely be reaching out to her to see if we could possibly put together um another town hall with these delegates that are, of course, running around the county and asking for our votes um to talk about some of these issues that we discussed. Um I think it's, you know, important that we hold these people accountable, especially for things that are impacting our students. Um and definitely, you know, giving them an earache um as school board members, I think is, you know, an obligation of ours. Uh so if anyone has any particular issues that they've run into, you know, whether it's your job as a principal or as an administrator, director, teacher, faculty member, anything that has to do with public education, um I'm definitely all ears to, you know, hear what that issue is. Um that way, when these town hall and community meetings are put together with some of these delegates that again are asking for our votes um later this November, they can hear about these things. And, you know, I know that all the other school board members would definitely be on board with holding them accountable to those things as well. Cause a lot of the stuff, you know, I think people when we sometimes tell them in certain contexts that our our hands are tied and we can't do things, a lot of times that sounds like a cop out. And, you know, I know sometimes when I hear people tell me that their hands are tied, I'm like, yeah, that's a cop out. You're just using excuse. But in some cases, that's a, you know, legitimate answer for a lot of things that we're doing because we're so tied to, you know, what the state department does. And when you hear, oh, well, if we get this new governor in, then, you know, all of it can be, you know, written out and, you know, all of the training that we put our teachers through and all of the training that the principals administered, you know, with the teachers, all of that's now being reversed and we're having to do something else. I mean, that's impacting kids. All what four thousand, you know, two, four thousand one hundred, uh hopefully we'll get to that number, um all four thousand one hundred students in the county. So yeah, if anyone has anything that you're like, okay, this is a really pressing issue in public education, please let me know. Um allow me to be of service um in that regard.
That's the word for today.
I just don't have a whole lot today, but uh uh hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and just wonderful Happy New Year to everyone. Um really all I have is that today ended the first semester, so. No, I speak for me and Amani both. When when I say that we're looking forward to the challenge of new classes and getting into new um things throughout the school. So it's just, it's a big semester for her seeing as it's her last one. So just uh looking forward to see y'all next month.
Thank you. Well, I just want to thank you all for for voting for me to to serve as your chair. I appreciate it. I look forward to working alongside Dwayne as vice chair. And um Dwayne, Ms Pittman is just like what you said, my mentor too. And I said, we came in, I guess, as strangers. Now we friends. So that's how that is because I can call her and she'll help me. And if I can do anything to help her, I'll help her. So that's how it is. And no, she will not quit. She will not quit.
She's my, she's my midnight conversation person.
We we don't go to sleep, so.
Thank you, Ms Pittman, for all for all you do and each one of you. And I look forward to this year to having a great year. And uh and we will, because we're gonna work together to make sure that it happens, Dr. Weston.
You're absolutely right. I think I had the opportunity today to attend the superintendent's meeting and I was just reminded um you know, how fortunate we are to live in this community and to have a board who's really focused on the right things. And a board that really does care about kids, cares about teachers, cares about principals, cares about the work and puts that up before anything else. And um and that's why I think it works. And you're absolutely right. Your positivity just keeps us focused on, regardless of what the budget ends up looking like, regardless of, we're gonna figure this out. We'll figure it out. And I was just so inspired with the middle school today. Um and for those of you who haven't had a chance to step into the middle school, it's exactly what you see, saw here this evening, but a hundredfold. Um and I was just so inspired by the leadership of our young people. Um and um and that's just the tip of the iceberg for what's happening there. And so I just appreciate the leadership in our schools um and what's happening, especially with the middle school. Thank you for sharing that this evening and and putting our kids up there to to demonstrate the, what they're doing in the school. So appreciate that. Appreciate the leadership of our teachers in classrooms, the leadership of all of you all here. Have had some great conversations this week with Shenaria and Carly and talking about the future and young people and just kind of dreaming out loud. And and that makes me really excited, you know? Amanda and I do it every day, so it's, you know, we're always thinking about the future. But just really excited about the the opportunities that we're doing, the doors that were open for young people. Um just the new courses, all the things that are planned. I'm I'm just excited about how we're gonna accelerate our learning, but more importantly, how we're building character in our young people and how we're opening doors for them. Cause that's really why we're all here, is to do those things. And I'm just proud to be a part of it. I keep looking this way, cause I gotta get used to looking this way too.
Is there anything else we need to? So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I move for adjournment.
We're here to um and are they, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.